...are the terrorist attacks committed against Israel on October 7th to Israel's response. Israel has the right to defend herself. I stand with Israel. I pray for the country, its citizens, people I met while I was there, and family members of my friends who are here in the United States. I also pray for the innocent Palestinian civilians killed or trapped in this war, and I was encouraged to hear of the humanitarian aid package announced by President Biden for civilians in Gaza and the West Bank. But why am I talking about the Israel-Hamas war? What does it have to do with Montgomery County or county government? While for some of us, this is a far-off conflict, for many of our Jewish neighbors, it is very personal. They have loved ones, both family and friends, who live in Israel. They have traveled to Israel, studied in Israel, and shared major life moments in Israel. The interconnectedness that I mentioned in Israel extends from Israel to our country and our region. Our neighbors are hurting and grieving, and they are scared. We also have Palestinian neighbors who have lost loved ones in Gaza and share the same concern for their loved one's safety and future. They are hurting and grieving and scared. Both synagogues and mosques are concerned with security and whether it's safe to gather together and worship. This is wrong. Anti-Semitism and Islamophobia are rising here in the United States and in our community. This is dangerous, this is wrong, and I stand against hate. We may not be able to solve or stop the violence in the Middle East, but we can look out for and care for one another here by being sensitive, supportive, and listening to what our neighbors are saying to us and encouraging them not to be afraid. We can have their back. I don't claim to have all the answers, or maybe any answers at all. I don't always know the right thing to say or when to say it. I think as a society, we've become too quick to post and opine rather than listen, learn, and try to understand people's pain. I am a person of faith, and in my faith, a foundational scripture is Matthew 22:36-40, which says, "Teacher, what is the most important commandment in the law of Moses?" Jesus replied, "You must love the Lord your God with all your heart, all your soul, and your mind." This is the first and greatest commandment. A second is equally important: love your neighbor as yourself. The entire law and all the demands of the prophets are based on these two commandments. No matter what our religion is, no matter what God we worship, we all share a common humanity. We all want to feel safe in our communities, and right now, many of our neighbors do not. During this raw time of grief, anger, and fear, if you don't know what to say, just ask your neighbor how they are doing. And if you pray, pray for peace. And I'll make my other comments for the closing comments.
Great. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I also want to acknowledge the brutal attacks on Israelis by Hamas. I condemn these heinous terrorist attacks by Hamas that included the murders and kidnappings of innocent civilians, including children. The devastation continues to unfold as this war escalates. Many innocent civilians in Israel and Gaza are caught in a conflict and are suffering unspeakable harm, which has created an urgent global and humanitarian crisis. I, too, had the opportunity to go to Israel back in 2017. I had the pleasure of traveling to Israel with one of my best friends from Penn State University, Seema, who happens to be Jewish. Israel, a beautiful and sacred place with warm and passionate people, welcomed me with open arms, even though I was Christian. It was such a beautiful experience to be with Seema and travel the Holy Land and share that experience together, regardless of who we pray for. So to see the graphic images and stories coming out of that region now is truly devastating. I feel the grief and sadness for many innocent Israeli and Palestinian lives that have been lost, and for all the loved ones who are in pain and suffering around the world as a result. As of today, 31 Americans have been killed, and more than a dozen are unaccounted for. Many more are trying to make it back home safely. I stand with Israel and support their right to defend themselves and pray for a quick and peaceful end to this conflict. I am unequivocally against all kinds of hatred and bigotry, including anti-Semitism and Islamophobia. I am in deep gratitude to and support...
But several will staff a table at an area grocery store. The complete list of locations is linked from the poster on the District Attorney's We are accepting prescription and over-the-counter meds, and they are tablets and capsules, inhalers, vaping products, creams and ointments, nasal sprays, and pet medicines. Residents can drop off meds and pills in the original pill bottle or packaging. It can be placed in the collection bins as is, or the residents can black out any identifying information on the pill prescription bottle if they would like to. Or all the loose pills-meds can be placed into a Ziploc baggie. What is not accepted are liquid medicines, needles, and other sharps. The District Attorney's Office, in conjunction with the Montgomery County Police Chiefs Association, has been running Drug Takeback Days twice a year since 2010. That same year, we also installed the big med return boxes in police departments to collect unwanted medicines whenever it's convenient for the resident. During the last two Drug Takeback Days, in April 2023, we collected 5,629 pounds, and then last October in 2022, we collected nearly 5,000 pounds. Since we have started this program in 2010, we have collected more than 1,114,000 pounds of meds. That is not a lot of prescription-- that is a lot of prescription and over-the-counter meds that were not flushed down a toilet or put in the landfill, thereby helping to keep our environment free of these toxins. All of the medications collected through Drug Takeback Day and through med return boxes are safely destroyed in facilities federally licensed to handle medical waste. So why do we do this? We do this to help make these overdose death numbers go down that you see on the screen. Since 2016, when fentanyl really became the driver in illegal drugs, we have seen too many families lose a loved one to overdose death, driven by the increase in fentanyl in the illegal drug market. But as you can see, our overdose deaths were under 200 for the first time in 2022, decreasing by 17% at a time when nationally overdose deaths decreased by 2%. At the same time, Philadelphia's overdose deaths increased by 11%. So what we have been doing-- so this is what we've been doing to make a difference. We have run these twice-a-year Drug Takeback Days to collect unwanted meds while at the same time serving as a reminder to residents that they need to be careful and safe with medications in the home. We have installed med return boxes in all police departments in the county, at the courthouse, and in some medical facilities. We have equipped all police vehicles with naloxone, the opioid overdose reversal drug, which of course is also carried by all EMTs. This is helping to save the lives, as the slide shows. That's more than 400 people who walk-- so there are over 400 people who have walked away from an overdose. Beyond that, our Montgomery County detectives and local police departments have gone hard on investigating, arresting, and prosecuting major drug dealers who are peddling this poison. And we have investigated all overdose deaths as potential homicides. When we can prove that the dealer provided the fatal drugs that killed someone, we are ...
...videos demonstrating various aspects of the machines, including what happens if the voting machine does not accept your ballot. When you arrive at your polling location, there are three different groups of people that could be there. We've got people who are outside of a polling location, they are distributing campaign or partisan materials. We have poll workers inside the polling location who are trained to adhere to relevant laws under the Pennsylvania Election Code. Three of these positions inside a polling location are elected. The next time we will elect poll workers is in 2025. All of our poll workers are registered to vote in Montgomery County. They're not employed by the government at any level. They cannot hold public office or serve on any commissions. Poll watchers are also permitted inside of a polling location. Poll watchers are selected by candidates or party leadership to observe the process, and they are certified through our department. I wanted to clarify some of the questions that we receive frequently about machines. So all of our voting machines are tested for accuracy before they are deployed to a polling location or before we use them at the central canvas. Both parties are invited to observe this process. If there is a problem with your ballot, the machine will alarm and it will not accept your ballot. The machines are also, I kind of joke that they are one-trick ponies. They only know how to read the election day ballot for that specific precinct. They cannot read a mail-in ballot, they cannot read an absentee ballot, they cannot read a provisional ballot. This is for a number of different reasons, mainly security. But if you are in a location that, say, a large high school gymnasium that has multiple precincts, you do need to take care that you are inserting your ballot into the machine that has been assigned to your precinct, and they all have stickers on the front that will match to the precinct printed at the top of your ballot. Poll workers issue Sharpies for voters to mark their ballot. Sharpies are the recommended writing utensil by our voting machine vendor. The ink does not smear, it does not leave a residue on the scanner, which helps keep voting moving on election day. We don't have to stop and clean those scanners. The ink can be, the ink is archival, meaning that if I need to pull those ballots out for any reason, six months, 10 months, a year later, the ink is still going to look exactly the same as it did on election day. Ballots are formatted so that bleed-through is not an issue. Any of the ovals on the front of the ballot do not line up with any of the ovals on the back of the ballot. And the voting equipment does not connect to the Internet at any time. Any voter who wishes to vote by absentee or mail-in ballot must apply every calendar year. Again, these applications are processed through the same system that voter registration is housed in, so we are able to tell, you know, who a registered voter is. We're only issuing ballots to registered voters. We only mail ballots to voters who have an approved application on file, and if a voter fills out multiple applications, they will still only receive one ballot. The absentee and mail-in application does ask for a driver's license, state ID or a state ID number, or the last four digits of a social security number, so we are verifying identity before we issue, before we count a ballot. If we're not able to verify the voter's identity, they do have the opportunity to get in touch with our office to clarify whatever the discrepancy is, but we're not able to count their ballot until we have verified their identity. We mail ballots out about three weeks ahead of the election. We are at about 78,400 ballots out in the mail right now, starting to get them back, so it's always an exciting time for our office. Voters can return their ballot via the United States Postal Service, Secure Ballot Dropbox, or at one of our office locations. About 75% to 80% of our ballots are returned to us by, through the USPS. A 1% to 5% come back through an office location, and only about 20% to 25% are returned through Dropbox. Voters can visit our offices, we are actually going to be in four locations over this weekend, including here in Narstown, so five locations. Voters can visit our office to register to vote in person. That does have to be completed by Monday, so that deadline is rapidly approaching. You can also apply for an absentee or mail-in ballot in person in our office and receive it on demand. We are able to offer that service until October 31st, and you can also visit us to say hello and return your absentee or mail-in ballot right to us. Our main office is here in One Montgomery Plaza on the sixth floor. We're here Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. We do have some extended hours coming up, so please check our website for those hours. We've got our satellite offices opening this weekend. We will be in Pottstown, Lansdale, Willow Grove, Lower Marion, and here in Narstown. Two on Saturday, three on Sunday, and then the reverse for next weekend. So that full schedule is available on our website. As I mentioned previously, voters can return their ballot in a couple of different ways. So Dropboxes just offer voters a way to return their ballot directly to voter services without the use of a third party like the United States Postal Service, but making it more accessible since our county is geographically very large and Narstown is very far away from certain points of the county. It's important to, for voters who wish to use a Dropbox, to know that they must only return their own ballot unless they are acting as a designated agent for a person who is disabled under the Americans with Disabilities Act. If you are acting as a designated agent, there is a specific form that you need to fill out. The voter whose ballot you are returning is giving their consent for you to return it on their behalf, and you are also signing an affirmation stating that...
...clarity with regard to the RFPs for both of those properties. The Erie Street Prison and the adjacent parking lot, RFPs are not consistent with your commitment your application for demolition, which is for the prison, which is pending before the Narstown Council, Narstown Borough Council. As you know, the prison is an architectural masterpiece, portions of which the Lebrun-designed sections deserve to be saved and repurposed. Yet, the county has budgeted $4.5 million for the removal of the prison. I would assert that the market for repurposing and saving the prison has not been tested. There have been significant public and private investment coming into Narstown in recent years, and some examples of which are the $415 million investment in the Justice Center, the Trail Junction Center, which has an investment of $1 million to date, The Grand, which is the mixed-use development at Main and DeKalb Streets. That's a $31 million mixed-use development, 111 units, on seven stories. There's some private money going into that, and there's some public money going into that. The Narstown Community Facilities Project, $7 million, and the Arch Street Greenway Project, significant investment, which indicates that there is renewed interest in redevelopment and reinvestment in economic development in Narstown. It's premature to issue an RFP for the demolition of the prison without first testing the market. And what I mean by that is calling a halt to the demolition pending the issuance of an RFP to test the waters, to see what interest there might be on the part of the development community in repurposing, saving portions of the prison.
Thank you, Mayor. Time is up.
I would just close by saying that the proposed demolition of the prison, I would label as speculative demolition, and we, the residents of this county, deserve better, and you should be held accountable to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is Peggy Delisanti.
Hello, I'm a resident of Montgomery County. We had a forum last week, a public forum, and many would have been delighted to see you at the Friends of the Erie Street Prison Forum last week. It would have meant the world to your constituents, no matter if you are for or against the demolition of a piece of history. If you don't preserve history, you're bound to repeat it. We were taught that in school, weren't we? Commissioner Lawrence... ...was a very proud speaker at the forum by the name of Nicole Porter, Senior Director at the Sentencing Project in Washington, and she questions your motivation to rush into tearing down this piece of history. Sorry you weren't at the forum, because you could have gotten up to speak and address that yourself. You all missed the expert speak. They shared very valuable information about preservation and repurposing of this historic, of historic buildings. For those of you whose term ends December 31st, Narstown will be dust in your rearview mirror. But those of us that remain behind, including public servants, we will be left to pick up the pieces once again. I'm hoping that you all can agree to put a pause on the demolition of this historic, valuable gem that belongs in this town. Your window, I don't know what it looks like on the other side of the shades, but you have a Lebron masterpiece right across the street. And that prison and that courthouse are bookends, and there's no place in the world that has two Lebron masterpieces in one block. Don't throw it away. There's been a lot of writings in the newspaper. I'm hoping that the next things have positive information in it about a pause, a stop to the demolition of that beautiful, beautiful building over on Erie Street. I thank you for your time, and I really pray that God reaches into your hearts and your minds to make the correct decision for the people in this town that deserve better. They deserve a destination that's beyond our wildest dreams, and that's the Erie Street Historic Building. Thank you.
Up next is Pauline Bracchio.
I'm going to be reading from the Pennsylvania Constitution. It's Article 1, Section 27, and it states, "The people have a right to clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of the natural scenic, natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment." That's actually in the Constitution, but you're so used to breaking the law that you don't even care that that is our right. Jamila, at the Commissioner debate a week ago, you told us that you're a strong woman. I have not seen that evidence yet, and I would like to see you be a strong woman and vote against demolishing the prison. I would also like to hear you denounce Commissioner Lawrence for his crimes in the past and ask him to resign, demand his resignation. You are not a strong woman if you cannot stick up for women, and if you cannot uphold the law. And the law is stating that that prison should not be knocked down. So I really, I don't want to be picking on you, but you said it many times, you're a strong woman. I want to see you be a strong woman, because, you know, you're running for election, these two are going to be leaving. Joe already voted no, so you can actually prevent this from going forward all by yourself, because Tom LaPaire is going to be voting yes. We know that he's just as corrupt as Ken. So if you really want to prove yourself a strong woman, I urge you to do both of those The other thing that I was saying during my objection was that million, one, let me see now, $1,250,000 fire truck. Are you going to be building the firehouse for that truck specifically? Where are the other firehouses in, in the city or a town? And, you know, you're leaving people defenseless against fire if you are knocking down firehouses for one truck. And I was looking online at these trucks, they're like huge, and the turning radius is 52 feet. So I don't even know how you could do that in that space, especially when one street is a one-way only and the other one is very narrow. I just really hope that you can see your way clear, honor your grandmother and your mother, who were also strong women.
Please don't bring my grandmother and mother into this.
And what you did, you always do, so I'm just going to give it back to you.
All right.
And that's it.
That's it. You can sit down.
No. You don't tell me to sit down before my time is up.
You can sit down.
Okay? I'll sit down when I'm ready. Okay, my time is now up.
Paulie.
All right? No. He's got to be a big shot. Let me stop this.
Up next is David Morgan.
Yeah, I will sit. He's leaving, and that's why he's rushing people. That's why he's rushing this.
Please remove her from the room.
No, I do not. Do not touch me.
You are leaving. You're leaving.
He's being a big shot because he knows he's wrong.
We had this discussion.
We didn't have any discussion.
We did.
No, we didn't.
You are leaving.
You are lying.
You are leaving. Come on. Nope.
Okay, you can take that, just don't...
You're leaving.
I'm going to make a motion to recess the meeting. You need a second?
I'll second that.
Meeting is recessed. We'll reconvene in five minutes.
And he's a liar and a thief. No.
Yes. There's no, no.
This is my wrong. I have a right to be here. This is a public meeting. I said stop it.
No. Stand up. Stand up, please.
Okay, I'll go to this one. Great. You know what I'm doing? You've never done this. I have a right to that. Do not touch me.
You're going to walk out or you're going to walk in?
If you've been back up.
Get it.
Back up.
Come on.
That's my right. You do my bad.
And we'll have our next public comment.
Next up is David Morgan.
I have some sets to give out.
Can you please give them to the Ms. Washington?
I'm David Morgan from Ambler, and I'm going to mention that in terms of taxpayers of our county, I'm concerned. Last meeting, I did... moving forward. The costs, any cost sharing would be equal amongst the counties. We will have the ability to plan our energy strategy together, but we will always have the ability to choose individually whether we want to participate or not. Our contracts will be individually. If the board decides to do a strategy that we do not agree with, that is not representative of what we would like to do, we have the ability to not participate. So, this is hopefully an opportunity to get the best possible deals, but then if something does not reflect our goals, we have the opportunity to not participate in that procurement or in that strategy. And at the end of the day, if for some reason, moving forward, we decide this is not our best, in our best interest, we can remove ourselves from the MOU with a six-month notification. So, not going to go through all of this, but it's, this is what the process will be moving forward. Basically, hopefully, we will sign the MOU. The key to all of this, and the reason why this is such a positive strategy moving forward is the fact that we'll be able to work collectively, collaboratively, and we'll be able to work, create a strategy. How do we purchase energy? How do we do it the best way? We'll be able to iteratively look at our strategies, adjust, and move forward, and hopefully, at the end of the day, continually get the best energy deals possible and be able to integrate renewable energies in a way that opens doors that are not available to us now. That's it. Any questions?
All right. Let me get a motion on the table. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Bucks, Chester, and Delaware Counties to create the Sustainable Energy Partnership of Southeast Pennsylvania Board. Be it further resolved that Dean Dorton be appointed to the Sustainable Energy Partnership of Southeast Pennsylvania Board for a term that begins immediately and expires on October 18th, 2025, and that John Lesher services designate. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. John, the question on DVR RPC, so that's not yet fully formed, that they will be the coordinator?
Well, once the board has to form, and then they would appoint DVR RPC.
Okay.
So, I, I feel like it is, at this point, a technicality, but...
Okay. All right. We're just waiting for the board to be appointed, then to formally appoint them as well.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. I know you give credit to others, but I know you've been one of the primary drivers, if not the primary driver of this for, it seems like, quite some time. So it's great to see it come to fruition. I think this is a great example of regional partnership and how we can better provide for an energy need, so I plan to vote yes, but I just wanted to thank you personally for all your hard work on this.
Thank you very much. My pleasure.
Further questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Next, authorization to enter into a reimbursement grant agreement for the Cross County Trail Bridge at Germantown Pike. Mr. France.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Yes, so today we have this resolution for $2.5 million grant as part of the community project funding. This was authorized in the 2023 Omnibus Appropriations Bill. It is federal dollars with a 20% match. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the significance of this trail and this segment, which really is huge. But before that, I have to acknowledge and thank our Congresswoman Madeline Dean, who was instrumental in getting this funding and has been a great partner for not only this trail, but others as well in the past. Next slide. So, the Cross County Trail, you can see the circle on this map. This is our primary trail network from our comprehensive plan, Monaco 2040, and we're in various stages of completed trail segments and projects underway, as well as visionary projects for the future. The Cross County Trail is, I can't stress enough how imperative it is and how beneficial it's going to be to the county in the context of the trails that we've completed so far. Upon completion, it will connect the Scootville River Trail on the south and western end of the county, which really runs from Philadelphia all the way to Berks and Redding and meandering through Chester County a little bit as well. And to the north, it connects into the power, power line trail, which is in various phases, as well as the Penny Pack Trail, which then goes into Bucks County to connect to their trail network. So the Cross County hits a broad base of population as well as connectivity, both in some fantastic, more environmentally pleasing settings, as well as connecting to employment centers and population centers like Concha Hockin, and then getting us down into King of Prussia on the Chester Valley Trail, as well as Fort Washington. We've had multiple partners in this, including Township of Upper Dublin, who's completing parts of it that go through there, as well as in White Marsh and currently the Erdenheim Farm section. Go to the next slide. So zooming in on that circle for the area on the left, the first circle is where the bridge over Germantown Pike is planned for. This is one of the most significant obstacles we've encountered in a trail system. We know how important it is to make this link. The existing trail goes up through the Metroplex and ends at Germantown Pike. Getting across, given the traffic and the setup and the topography there, as we always knew, was, was going to be difficult. A feasibility was recently complete, feasibility study was completed that determined that a bridge was necessary to cross this gap and extend the trail. The rest of it you see here within that shaded area is a two-mile extension that will then connect to another part of the trail that is under development and likely to go to construction very soon, and that's through the Erdenheim Farm and other areas of White Marsh before connecting into Upper Dublin. So that is the context of this. Again, getting through this, getting this in place, really links all of the efforts that we've been making over the last 20 years, and is going to result in not only a great primary trail network for the county, but a regional circuit trail connections that go to many counties, as I mentioned in the beginning. Next slide. And so the business we have in front of us is kind of the initiating part of this. The Montgomery County Planning Commission is currently working with staff at the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and we're preparing and executing the necessary paperwork. Then we're going to advertise the project through PennDOT's ECMS platform, but the first step is to have a general reimbursement grant agreement, much like with federal aid highway projects, which will take place between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania through PennDOT and Montgomery County as the local project sponsor to access these funds. As I mentioned, there is a 20% match that will occur, and this money will eventually, will ultimately go towards all the design and final engineering for both the bridge and the two-mile segment offhand. And that's all I have.
All right. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to enter into a general reimbursement grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for design and construction of a bridge over Germantown Pike for a total cost of $3,125,000, with 80% to be reimbursed by federal highway project funds and with 20% to be paid by the county. Is there a second?
I'll second this.
Second by Commissioner Winder. I'll join you in thanking our Congresswoman Madeline Dean for her help on this. This is a huge, exciting project. I, I know, I ride the Cross County Trail, and I would never try to cross Germantown Pike there at all. So, very much looking forward to this coming through. Thank you for all your work that you've done over the years to get us to this point.
Thank you. That's great.
All right. Hearing none other comments or questions, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Authorization for the, for the county to convey property to the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission for the Lafayette Interchange. Mr. Edmond.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. The action before you is to approve executing settlement documents with the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission to sell a piece of property to them for use for the Lafayette Street interchange. So I have a couple of visuals here that we'll put up on the screen just to give you all context about where we're talking about and what we're talking about. So this on the screen is a map of the area Plymouth Township, just east of Narsetown. Narsetown's there up on the hill a little bit to the left, to the west. Bridgeport is across the river, and Plymouth Township makes up pretty much everything else on the right-hand side of the map. You can see where Lafayette Street comes in, and you can see how Ridge Pike parallels it, and the cross street at that star, and the star is the subject property. The cross street is Conchakon Road. It used to be called Diamond Avenue. It was transformed into the new Conchakon Road under the county's own portion of the Lafayette Street Extension Project. And so that's the area roughly where the turnpike is going to be coming over Conchakon Road and tying into Lafayette Street and making that connection to build that interchange. So this is the property plot. It's a, I've zoomed in on it. It's not the full thing. You can't see all the fun numbers and tables, but this is the diagram, which is what's most important. And so that long linear property there, it's 1,394 square feet. It's a vacant lot. It was a property that the county bought early in the Lafayette Street Extension Project itself. There was some, some old falling-down homes there and on the other side of it. So this is a remnant parcel that the county owns from our own project, and the turnpike is going to need it. You can see that, that series of lines that are right above it that kind of cut across right to left, that's where the turnpike will be bridging over Conchakon. So, not going to go through all of this, but it's, this is what the process will be moving forward. Basically, hopefully, we will sign the MOU. The key to all of this, and the reason why this is such a positive strategy moving forward, is the fact that we'll be able to work collectively, collaboratively, and we'll be able to work, create a strategy, how do we purchase energy, how do we do it the best way? We'll be able to iteratively look at our strategies, adjust, and move forward, and hopefully, at the end of the day, continually get the best energy deals possible and be able to integrate renewable energies in a way that it opens doors that are not available to us now. That's it. Any questions?
Let me get a motion on the table. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Bucks, Chester, and Delaware Counties to create the Sustainable Energy Partnership of Southeast Pennsylvania Board. Be it further resolved that Dean D'Orton be appointed to the Sustainable Energy Partnership of Southeast Pennsylvania Board for a term that begins immediately and expires on October 18th, 2025, and that John Lusher services designate. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. John, the question on EVRPC, so that's not yet fully formed, that they will be the coordinator?
Well, once the board has to form, and then they would appoint EVRPC.
Okay.
So, I feel like it is, at this point, a technicality, but...
Okay. All right. We're just waiting for the board to be appointed, then to formally appoint them as well. Okay. Thank you. I know you give credit to others, but I know you've been one of the primary drivers, if not the primary driver of this, for it seems like quite some time. So, it's great to see it come to fruition. I think this is a great example of regional partnership and how we can better provide for an energy need, so I plan to vote yes, but I just wanted to thank you personally for all your hard work on this.
My pleasure.
Further questions? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Next, authorization to enter into a reimbursement grant agreement for the Cross County Trail Bridge at Germantown Pike, Mr. France.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Yes, so today, we have this resolution for $2.5 million grant as part of the community project funding. This was authorized in the 2023 Omnibus Appropriations Bill. It is federal dollars with a 20% match. And I'm going to talk a little about the significance of this trail and this segment, which really is huge. But before that, I have to acknowledge and thank our Congresswoman Madeline Dean, who was instrumental in getting this funding, and has been a great partner for not only this trail, but others as well in the past. Next slide. So, the Cross County Trail, you can see the circle on this map. This is our primary trail network from our comprehensive plan, MOCO 2040. And we're in various stages of completed trail segments and projects underway, as well as visionary projects for the future. The Cross County Trail is, I can't stress enough how imperative it is and how beneficial it's going to be to the county in the context of the trails that we've completed so far. Upon completion, it will connect the Scootville River Trail on the south and western end of the county, which really runs from Philadelphia all the way to Berks and Redding, and meandering through Chester County a little bit as well. And to the north, it connects into the power line trail, which is in various phases, as well as the Penny Pack Trail, which then goes into Bucks County to connect to their trail network. So, the Cross County hits a broad base of population, as well as connectivity, both in some fantastic, more environmentally pleasing settings, as well as connecting to employment centers and population centers like Concha Hockin, and then getting us down into King of Prussia on the Chester Valley Trail, as well as Fort Washington. We've had multiple partners in this, including the township of Upper Dublin, who's completing parts of it that go through there, as well as in White Marsh, and currently the Erdenheim Farm section. Go to the next slide. So, zooming in on that circle, for the area on the left, the first circle is where the bridge over Germantown Pike is planned for. This is one of the most significant obstacles we've encountered in a trail system. We know how important it is to make this link. The existing trail goes up through the Metroplex and ends at Germantown Pike. Getting across, given the traffic and the setup and the topography there, as we always knew, was going to be difficult. A feasibility was recently completed, feasibility study was completed that determined that a bridge was necessary to cross this gap and extend the trail. The rest of it you see here, within that shaded area, is a two-mile extension that will then connect to another part of the trail that is under development and likely to go to construction very soon, and that's through the Erdenheim Farm and other areas of White Marsh before connecting it to Upper Dublin. So, that is the context of this. Again, getting through this, getting this in place, really links all of the efforts that we've been making over the last 20 years, and is going to result, and not only a great primary trail network for the county, but a regional circuit trail connections that go to many counties, as I mentioned in the beginning. Next slide. And so, the business we have in front of us is kind of the initiating part of this. The Montgomery County Planning Commission is currently working with staff at the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and we're preparing and executing the necessary paperwork. Then we're going to advertise the project through PennDOT's ECMS platform, but the first step is to have a general reimbursement grant agreement, much like with federal aid highway projects, which will take place between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania through PennDOT and Montgomery County as the local project sponsor to access these funds. As I mentioned, there is a 20% match that will occur, and this money will eventually, will ultimately go towards all the design and final engineering for both the bridge and the two-mile segment offhand. And that's all I have.
All right. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to enter into a general reimbursement grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for design and construction of a bridge over Germantown Pike for a total cost of $3,125,000, with 80% to be reimbursed by federal highway project funds, and with 20% to be paid by the county. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. I'll join you in thanking our Congresswoman Madeline Dean for her help on this. This is a huge, exciting project. I know, I ride the Cross County Trail, and I would never try to cross Germantown Pike there at all. So, very much looking forward to this coming through. Thank you for all your work that you've done over the years to get us to this point.
Thank you. That's great.
All right. Hearing no other comments or questions, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Authorization for the county to convey property to the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission for the Lafayette interchange. Mr. Edman.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here today. The action before you is to approve executing settlement documents with the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission to sell a piece of property to them for use for the Lafayette Street interchange. So, I have a couple of visuals here that we'll put up on the screen, just to give you all context about where we're talking about and what we're talking about. So, this on the screen is a map of the area Plymouth Township, just east of Narristown. Narristown's there, up on the hill a little bit to the left, to the west. Bridgeport is across the river, and Plymouth Township makes up pretty much everything else on the right-hand side of the map. You can see where Lafayette Street comes in, and you can see how Ridge Pike parallels it. And the cross street at that star, and the star is the subject property, the cross street is Conchakken Road. It used to be called Diamond Avenue. It was transformed into the new Conchakken Road, under the county's own portion of the Lafayette Street Extension Project. And so, that's the area roughly where the turnpike is going to be coming over Conchakken Road and tying into Lafayette Street and making that connection to build that interchange. So, this is the property plot. It's a, I've zoomed in on it. It's not the full thing. You can't see all the fun numbers and tables, but this is the diagram, which is what's most important. And so, that long, linear property there, it's 1,394 square feet. It's a vacant lot. It was a property that the county bought early in the Lafayette Street Extension Project itself. There was some old falling-down homes there and on the other side of it. So, this is a remnant parcel that the county owns from our own project, and the turnpike is going to need it. You can see that the series of lines that are right above it, that kind of cut across right to left, that's where the turnpike will be bridging over Conchakken Road and coming in. So, this property is in the way they're going to need it, and so they have made an appraisal and an offer to us as a county to consider us selling it to them. This is what it looks like in real life. If you stand out there today, the vehicles that are on our lot probably have changed. I don't think the food truck is still there anymore. But nonetheless, it's just an open lot. There's nothing there. It's grass, and, you know, no structures, no, nothing permanent, just a open vacant lot. So, the offer from the turnpike, their appraisal said $11,200, therefore, that's what they're offering the county. The lot is 1,394 square feet, or if you love to compute things into acres, it's .032 acres. Again, it's needed to build the Lafayette Street interchange, and so we, as Planning Commission staff, are recommending an amicable settlement. In essence, your approval today would allow staff and Commissioners to execute the settlement documents to transfer ownership of that property to the turnpike. And the reason why we, as staff, are advocating this is because the Lafayette Street project, which the county invested millions of dollars in, is not complete until the interchange is bought. And so, built, not bought. So, therefore, it makes sense for the county to sell this, to effectuate the interchange, so that we can actually see a realization of the revitalization of Narristown and better mobility and access into our county seat, into our county courthouse complex. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary documents to convey the fee simple right-of-way related to the Lafayette Street Extension Project from Montgomery County to the Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission for $11,200. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Another exciting project, and when do we think we will finish then, after this? Are you willing to? Are you willing to go on our turf there?
Well, whenever you talk about construction, you always have to hedge, because things happen in real life that you don't always foresee. But this interchange project is closely tied with one of our Ridge Pike sections that the county is leading and funding and doing, and that's Ridge Pike Section A. So, the Ridge Pike Section A is replacing the two bridges on either side of where some of those ramps will come in. That has to start first, so that we can start doing some things, widening some areas, and then the turnpike can come in after that with this project and the interchange. What most people don't realize is that you have to have an off-ramp to get off of the turnpike. It sounds obvious, but you just don't think of that sort of thing. And so, in order to have the room for that off-ramp, one of those bridge abutments that our Ridge Pike project has to deal with needs to be removed and moved back to create the space. So, they're both on a very consistent timeframe, and we're looking, at this point, at probably early 2025, for all those things to be under construction.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Edman. Any other comments or questions?
Just a quick comment, like, these projects are, this one and the two before, are, have been years in the making, has been noted, and it's a good reminder that these projects are all relay races, not sprints. I want to thank you guys for keeping them alive, and the previous generations, all the Planning Commission staff that have gotten them to this point.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Next, approval of grants for funding through the Montgomery County Transportation Program. Mr. Edman and Mr. Popek.
Okay. Mr. Popek is going to join me for this, so Matt, you can come on up whenever you're ready, now or when we get to your slides.
Yeah.
He is taller than me, so I guess, you know, it's good that I'm up here by myself, for now. So, this is the County Transportation Grant Program. This is something that you, as Commissioners, have authorized now for six years running. It's in the budget. We'll talk about that in a moment. Just for everyone's sake, this program is funded from the $5 vehicle registration revenue. It was enacted by the Commissioners in 2017. The county has been collecting that. Most of it goes to our county-owned bridges. But every year for, this is now the sixth year in a row, the Commissioners, you, have budgeted some of that money to go towards a program that allows us to invest in various other things throughout Montgomery County itself. So, before we get to some of the more interesting details, there's four goals, basically, that we've always had for this program. One is to geographically distribute the registration revenue throughout the county. We want to fund projects everywhere. We want to increase the overall transportation investment in our county by parcelling some things out. And more than anything, we planners love to try to meet the goals of our own County Comprehensive Plan, MOCO 2040. So, a quick overview, like I said, it comes from the vehicle registration revenue that we all pay into, myself included, and it shows up in our county budget. Sometimes it's in the capital, other times it's in the operating, but it always comes from this money. And it's because, and this is really important, the screen's a little bit cut off here, here in our room, but one-third of our municipalities don't have any county-owned roads and bridges. So, if the county government were to collect all of the money that we get from everyone around the county and all their vehicle registration revenue, and then invest it in every single county-owned road and bridge, one-third of our municipalities would never see a dime come back to them. So, this program is a way for us to make sure that those places at least have a chance or a shot at getting a piece of it back. And it all depends on them and their elected officials wanting to go after this and make an application, but at least the opportunity is there to distribute this throughout the county. And our municipalities, they own lots of things, you know, 2,700 miles of roads, 330 bridges, over almost 1,200 traffic signals, and yet, you know, the state, every year, they give them liquid fuels money, our gas taxes go to the state, and they parcel it out. The county gets a little bit, all of our municipalities get a little bit, but their median, the median number is 348,000, give or take. That's up a little bit from last year, but it's still down compared to pre-COVID. So, $348,000 in the world of transportation construction does not go very far. Certainly does not help a municipality maintain things. So, this is a program that helps to enlarge that pot. And this is just a graphic that we want to put up here, just to show you that all 42 awards that you have made as Commissioners in the previous five years, that they have been distributed all throughout the county for a whole host of different types of projects. Some of them are in places that do have county-owned roads and bridges, others, like Royersford, for instance, they have no county-owned roads and bridges. They've received four grants, because they've had really good projects. So, you can see that this has been distributed everywhere around our county over the first five years. Just a couple of pictures, our success stories, the Press Hill Road Bridge in Lower Pots Grove out in the west, helping pedestrian movements in Royersford, across Seventh Street in Maine. The lower left is Narberth, helping them to manage stormwater on one of their locally-owned streets. And then the one there on the far right is, yes, that's War Sester, that's 363 and Township Line Stump Hall Road. So, investing in signals and pedestrian movements and traffic mobility and stormwater. So, this program has funded a lot of different things, not just in a lot of places. All right. So, the 2023 round, same as in previous years, $1 million, once again, only municipalities can apply. We're only funding construction, because we want this money to be used to build things. There's a maximum award, if you do all the numbers, of $500,000, that's the most you can get, but we have it, once again, this year, in two tiers. One for smaller municipalities with more limited budgets, and then the opportunities for more funds for our more wealthier municipalities, but they also have to match a little bit more, too. So, trying to tailor this for every type of community. Eligibility is focusing more this year than previous years on roadway improvements. We want to make sure that we were, again, having a wide diversity of types of projects, and we had been funding a lot of crosswalks in the last couple of years. So, you know, building and repairing roads, same with bridges, improving our traffic signage and signals, and then repaving roads, but if they add bicycle lanes and crosswalks to be consistent with Bike MOCO, MOCO 2040, and some other planning documents that the county has. We had focus areas like Bike MOCO and our own county assets, and we really tried to get some innovative projects this year. So, we will go over here in just a moment what those are, but one or two more quick things, and then we'll shift to Mr. Popek. We had a 15-person review committee, 11 of them actually scored, and they were made up of members on our Planning Commission and Transportation Authority boards, who, let's be honest, they represent everyday citizens. Those are appointed officials that you appoint to our boards. They don't work for county government. They're not professional planners or engineers, and so they were represented on our steering committee. We had a wide variety of county staff scoring it. We also made sure that PennDOT had a say in things, to make sure that these applications were compliant, because there's nothing worse than awarding a grant for something that's actually literally ineligible. And then lastly, our projects were evaluated based on their impacts of people, improvements they might make for underserved disadvantaged communities, whether or not they were in our plans or their own municipal plans, how close they were to starting construction, and whether or not they actually had strong financial support. We want to make sure these are good applications and good recipients, and that's what they were scored on. So, with that, I'll send it over to Mr. Popek. He'll talk about the three that we are recommending for your approval today.
Thank you, Mr. Edman. Next slide. Just as a reminder, here's how we got to this point. The guidebook was posted back in April at the website on your screen, MontgomeryCountyPA.gov/countytransportationprogram. We allowed each municipality to take a look at what our new guidebook was recommending for applications for two months, April and May, before opening the actual application period in June, which was then opened for two months in June and July. Our project review committee that Mr. Edman mentioned earlier was reviewing the applications during August and September, and here we are in October to present them for approval. Next slide. Here is the graphic with the eight applications that we received this year. They're shown in the black outlines of the municipalities around the county, and we have three for your, recommending for your approval today, shown in green, and I will go through them in alphabetical order. The first one is in Lower Pots Grove, is the North Adams Street Bridge Rehabilitation over Sprogels Run. This is a bridge rehabilitation to replace the bridge deck and beams, rehabilitate some of the existing abutments, and install a new guide rail. North Adams Street's a pretty important roadway in this area. It's supposed to be a major bus route for school buses, for park buses, and for fire trucks, and right now, the bridge is weight-limited enough that some of those larger vehicles have to go around. This was a bridge that, I guess, kind of slipped through the cracks, as it were, not literally slipping through the cracks, but in terms of reviews, PennDOT was notified the township back in 2020 that the bridge was the township's responsibility. The township had thought that it was PennDOT's responsibility. So, there's a bit of deferred maintenance that's ready to go for this project, which is why Lower Pots Grove has proposed this overall package of repairs that will hopefully bring this bridge back into and standing up position. The amount of award is $310,145, which would be matched with funding that comes from Lower Pots Grove's Act 209 Transportation Impact Fee Ordinance, which is a helpful way for municipalities to take funding that is coming from new developments to move towards transportation infrastructure improvements around their township. The township is hoping to bid this project out early next year, and it should be completed within one construction season, which is what happened with the Press Hill Road Bridge that we approved for a grant back in 2021. Next slide. Second project is for Upper Dublin Township. They've actually been pretty successful with this program. This is their fourth grant award, totaling over $1.3 million over the last six years, between the Welsh Road Signal Coordination along Route 63, the Virginia Drive Road Diet and Cross County Trail Construction, and the new traffic signal going in at Virginia Drive in Camp Hill Road. A lot of those projects are in the greater Fort Washington area, and this is no exception. This is for assisting construction costs with the Fort Washington zip ramp at Commerce Drive. The township and the municipal authority have been long planning this particular improvement to their transportation system. You can see on the screen the Fort Washington interchange coming off of the Pennsylvania Turnpike. Right now, you have to continue to go straight forward to the ramps for Route 309, and if you're trying to come into the greater Fort Washington area, you have to wind your way around through Commerce Drive. This particular project is proposing a new road and intersection improvements coming right into Commerce Drive between the Best Western and the TruMark corporate headquarters, which have already been worked with, with the township, and the right-of-way has been purchased. This is an overall construction project being done by the Upper Dublin Municipal Authority, and it's nearly a $2.9 million construction project, between some cost increases for construction materials and signage requirements that the Pennsylvania Turnpike is requesting of them, including a new monopole sign, which you can see right as the ramp starts to turn off from the interchange itself. They came to us to attempt to ask for some additional funding, even though they have received a good deal amount from the state as well. So, this would be a grant recommendation in the amount of $350,000. And it is important to note that this was included in the county's original Pennsylvania Turnpike corridor reinvestment study. So, we're always happy to see some of the plans that have been going on for a long time coming to fruition, piece by piece. This would be expecting construction in 2024 and 2025. And finally, our third recommendation is in Whippane Township for the Jolly Road and Wentz Road intersection improvements. This is a combination of new and realigned turn lanes with the hope of connecting Wentz Road and the neighborhoods to the north of the northeast extension into Whippane Township's new official Mermaid Park. This would be removing the channelized right-turn lane from westbound Jolly Road onto Wentz, turning it into a dedicated turn lane, installing a right-turn overlap phase as part of the traffic signal improvements, and making a no-turn-on red, while also including a new dedicated left-turn lane for Jolly Road heading eastbound towards Wentz. In addition, some sidewalk and ADA curb ramps would be installed along Wentz Road underneath the Pennsylvania Turnpike Northeast Extension Overpass, along with some pedestrian signals in order to get people across Wentz, across Jolly Road, excuse me, into the new Mermaid Park. Both Whippane and Lower Pots Grove applied for these projects last year. We had a lot of competitive projects last year, and these were not particularly awarded, but these municipalities did come back to us and say, hey, how can we make our applications better and more competitive? The Planning Commission staff and others have assisted with them, and we think that these, both of these projects have progressed a little bit further along and are more ready for recommendation for approval this year. The one last piece about Whippane is they also received a state award from the Green Light Go program to specifically look at the traffic signal cabinet boxes at Jolly and Wentz Road, and that was originally part of their application to our program, but they said, oh, now we're getting state money. We don't need the county's funding for this. So, the $361,495 listed does take into account that they already have the state funding. This would be built mid to late next year for hopefully completion in 2025. So, in total, we are recommending $1,021,640 across the three different grants. Two of these, as I just mentioned, had previously applied for this project that is being awarded this year. In total, we're up to 27 out of our 62 municipalities that have received a CTP award, and across all six years of the program, we're up to 45 awards pending today's approvals, and $6,31,840.50 going back into transportation infrastructure projects around the county.
Okay. I will get a motion on the table. I'll move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into grant agreements with the appropriate municipal officials to fund the programs under the conditions specified for each grant. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Mr. Popek, thank you, and you kind of previewed one of my questions. So, the unsuccessful applicants, they will get feedback on how they can make their proposal stronger, how they can make the proposal stronger for next year if they want to resubmit?
They're always welcome to contact us. Sometimes it's just, there are better ones out there. Sometimes it's a matter of their application is more of an idea, and something needs to be a little bit further engineered before it is ready for programs such as this one.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next up, approval of amendments to the collective bargaining agreements with ASME Local 676 and ASME Local 1582. Ms. Calder.
Thank you. The purpose of the resolution before you is to allow the county to enter into amendments to collective bargaining agreements with two union groups. ASME Local 1582, which represents certain employees in domestic relations, juvenile probation, and adult probation, and ASME Local 676, which represents certain employees in the county row officers, row offices. When the county entered into the most recent agreements with these two unions, it knew that it would be undertaking a comprehensive compensation study and wanted represented, as well as non-represented employees, to benefit from the study. Therefore, the county requested that language be added to each contract to allow for certain representative employees' salaries to be adjusted following the completion of the compensation study. The county has now had an opportunity to share the results with the union representatives, and based on the compensation study, the unions in the county would like to make the appropriate amendments to their agreements, so that the salaries of certain employees, certain representative employees in these two unions may be made.
All right. I will make a motion that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the necessary amendments to the respective collective bargaining agreements with ASME and municipal employees locals 1582.
agreements with ASME and municipal employees Locals 1582 and 676 to provide for adjustments to the salaries of employees identified by the compensation study. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Calder. Next, I'll make a motion to, for reappointments to the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board. I'll move that Tom Shires, Richard Odericio, Eric Davies, and Al Zohn be reappointed to the Valley Forge Tourism and Convention Board for terms that begin immediately and expire on October 19th, 2027, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted laws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. And next up is personnel. Ms. Haylen.
Good morning. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's Personnel List. It is a 10-page document dated October 19th, 2023, with a timestamp of 9:08 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 19th, 2023 Personnel Presentation as Given by Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Haylen, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Are there any questions or board comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, we have advertisements and bids and RFPs, which is Exhibit A, and I will make a motion to approve the advertisements and bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on the attached Exhibit A, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Next, we have awards of contract, Montgomery County, which is Exhibit B. And I'll make a motion to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals. No, let me go back here. I'll make a motion to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment?
Yes, I'd like to note that I object to Contract Amendment Number Four on Exhibit B, which is Construction Management Services for the Justice Center. I also object to Contract Award Number 16, which is Showed Services with the Valid Attraction Equipment.
Okay, so please note that Commissioner Gale is a no on Number Four.
Sixteen.
And Number 16. Okay, hearing no other comments or objections, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? All others pass three to zero. Next, we have awards of contract for Southeast PA Regional Task Force, which is Exhibit C. I'll make a motion to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. And I do have some closing commissioner comments. This month is National Community Planning Month, so I'd like to take a moment to highlight some of the great work our colleagues in the Planning Commission do every day to help us have a safer, resilient, more equitable, and more prosperous community. I don't know if they timed to have so many big projects on this meeting this day, but you saw some of their work today. Our Montgomery County Planning Commission works diligently to support community, environmental, transportation, trails, and open space planning, and not only are they experts, they share that knowledge with others. For example, they are currently sponsoring a three-week course on zoning fundamentals, which offers insight into critical zoning issues and basic administration. And in two weeks, on October 30th, the Planning Commission is hosting a workshop for planners interested in supporting municipal land stewardship in response to popular demand from our municipalities. And just this week, many of our planning colleagues attended the annual statewide conference at the American Planning Association's PHF. And our very own Dulcie Flaherty, Vice Chair of the Planning Commission Board, received a Citizen Planner Award to honor her years of service on our Planning Commission and her role in creating the county's Open Space Preservation Program. So congratulations, Dulcie, and to all the planners at Montgomery County who work to improve the well-being of all people living in our communities by taking a comprehensive perspective. Next up, I'd like to announce our Way to Go Monco winners for October. The Way to Go Monco program is open to all county employees, encouraging them to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. To date, more than 200 county employees have submitted nominations, singing the praises of their coworkers. Each month, we draw employees from the list of nominations, and each wins $150 in recognition of their work. So here are this month's winners. First is Laura Crooks, who's an intake caseworker in the Department of Health and Human Services' Office of Children and Youth. Laura is constantly going above and beyond in her work. She is always willing to step up when called upon, is a team player, and possesses an incredible wealth of knowledge. Next is Julia Elitz, a Registry Supervisor at the Board of Assessment Appeals. Julia is a hard worker, resilient, creative, empathetic, and humble. These qualities have earned her the respect of those she supervises. She is an adaptable leader and an asset to her team. Next is John Marlet, who is a senior solicitor in the Solicitor's Office. His nomination says, John is one of the most hardworking and organized attorneys. He has a strong eye for detail and is an incredibly valuable asset to Montgomery County's employees, constituents, and to the local legal industry at large. Then we have Dominic Pennypacker, a correctional officer in our Montgomery County Correctional Facility. Dominic has trained many correctional officers and has always made himself available to answer any questions that new officers may have. He is always concerned about the safety of inmates that are in his housing section and is a model correctional officer. And finally, we have Barry Silver, who is a senior counter clerk in the Protonitaries Office. His nomination states, Barry is a very conscientious worker who displays excellent communication skills and is always on time. He is respected by his coworkers and management for his willingness to help anyone anytime he can. His demeanor with customers is outstanding. So I'd like to congratulate all of our Way to Go Monco winners. And I also want to take a moment to congratulate Stephanie Landis, Director of Supervision Services, who received the Louis J. Prisenza Distinguished Service Award from the PA Association of Treatment Court Professionals at their annual conference last week. This recognition was awarded to Stephanie by her peers to honor her dedication and commitment to the field of problem-solving courts. So congratulations, Stephanie, for your extraordinary leadership and support for individuals and problem-solving courts in Pennsylvania. And can we please give Stephanie a round of applause? All right, and finally, if you haven't noticed, it's fall, and I'd like to highlight some of the great activities that our county has planned to celebrate this season and that I hope many of our residents can take advantage of. This week, there's a full moon hike at Upper Skokel Valley Park, where visitors can enjoy the park in the moonlight and learn some fun facts about nocturnal residents from our very talented and knowledgeable parks, trails, and historic site staff. And on Saturday, Pennypackermills is having their annual All Hallows' Eve Fall Festival, where families can make crafts, paint pumpkins, press apples, cider, and more. And then next week, at Norristown Farm Park, many of our county departments are coming together to offer an opportunity for children to trick-or-treat for safe and healthy prizes. You can find more information about all these events and register for activities on our website, www.montgomerycountypa.gov, and I hope everyone has a chance to enjoy what I hope will be beautiful weather this weekend, and go Phillies.
Great. So I have a couple more comments. So the cold weather, as we all know, will be here soon. Unfortunately, we still have many in our community who don't have a warm coat for the winter. Our office, winter, not winter. Our Office of Health and Human Services is hosting a winter coat drive at the Montgomery County Human Services Center located at 1430 DeKalb Street in Norristown. The coat drive is being held through December 29th. Only new coats will be accepted for all ages and sizes. The greatest need is for children's coats from infant to 5T. If you have any questions, please contact our donation coordinator, Veronica Hillman, at veronica.hillman@montgomerycountypa.gov. Yesterday, we had the opportunity to meet with our newly-formed Advisory Council for Equity at the Meet and Greet at Elmwood Park Zoo. The program was hosted by our Chief of DEI, Donna Richmond, and the Chair of our Advisory Council, Atul Singhal. Our guest speaker facilitator was Dr. Brandy M. Baldwin, who is an author on leadership and the CEO of Millennial Ventures. She challenged us to consider new perspectives on what it means to be an ally, the importance of effective community engagement, and what we perceive to be the future of DEI. I want to thank everyone who is serving on our council for their time, their honesty, their work, and their passionate caring of our communities. That's it for me.
All right. I'll announce our upcoming meeting dates. Our next Board of Commissioners meeting is November 2nd, 2023, and we will also have an election board meeting on Friday, November 3rd, at 12:00 noon. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the October 19th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned, and we'll go on to Salary Board, and I believe the controller is doing this virtually today.
Good morning.
Morning. Do we have any public comment on Salary Board? All right.
Good morning, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a 16-page document dated October 19th, 2023, with a timestamp of 9:11 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the October 19th, 2023 Salary Board Presentation as Given by Chief Human Resources Officer Catherine Haylen, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
I'll make a motion.
So moved by Commissioner Winder, I will second the motion. Is there any board comment or questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. I'll make a motion to adjourn the October 19th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned.